Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anything on the agenda that needs to be addressed?
Mr. Johnson did submit a land sale policy change recommendation that we discussed yesterday.
Any public comment? Frank? Can you give it? Then if not, we have ten o'clock on the, the ten-ten on the, so we'll wait until ten-ten. Well, we have a guest here, Steve Schmidt on the solar. Come on up and see what this is. Well, this subject is traditionally, when a solar project comes, they would ask for an enterprise zone that we give some tax abatement for three years, just take, and then they go into a regular assessment. Let's lay the bodies, the state last year passed a deal that basically gives an option to the enterprise zone. It takes it out of the enterprise zone. And it's basically seven thousand a megawatt per year. And that basically gives a consistent expectation of what the cost is for the investors and everybody else. Otherwise, going through the normal process, the taxes, etc., the sale, department revenue, it can be up or down or whatever. So that bill, important number that was.
Pitts House billed thirty-four ninety-two. I know that because it's in front of some other reason why.
Yeah, I saw it sitting there.
It's a seven thousand dollars per megawatt for twenty years. Payment, live taxes is what it basically is.
And Steve is here as a consultant from a company called Origis?
Yes.
Origis. He's looking at solar development, around seventy-three acres out on Rabbit Hill, Missouri, in that area. So, give us a little thoughts, Steve, on why the Centville seven thousand megawatts, the feeling?
Sure. The main reason is essentially it provides certainty for the project of what the property tax costs are going to be essentially for the life of the project. I've personally spoken to this data assessor about how they will be looking at the assessments for solar projects, which is still a relatively new thing for the state or New York. And he indicated that it will be, you know, they're still kind of figuring it out that at first it would like to be based on construction costs, and at some point they would switch to projected revenues and otherwise. And really, the end result of that was that they're still figuring it out. And with solar projects, because they're based on contracts with set rates and you know exactly how much power you're going to produce in each given year, you effectively know what your revenue is going to be for the twenty-year life of the project. And to have other long-term costs being flexible is undesirable for the owner of the project and particularly for financing institutions that will be looking to lend on the project. So the more that we can define the certainty exactly what costs will be to the project, then that's to the project's benefit. And in reality, it's probably actually a slightly, if we were to guess, higher cost than what we would be if we went through traditional enterprise zone. But the certainty of those costs is a big enough factor for us to not choose to take that risk if we have the option.
We discussed this with Debbie Riley yesterday at the work session with Kristen Valley, and she kind of came over a little bit for us on some. Larry, our assessor's here. I'll talk.
I talked with Steve a little bit just before the meeting today, and researching this like you asked me to do, basically that's what it comes down to is they don't really want to go the enterprise zone, so there's really no decision one way or the other. If you didn't do the pilot agreement, perhaps they would go for the enterprise zone, or perhaps they'd go somewhere else. It's valuable to them because, like he said, it gives, they know what their costs are. So when we go to banks or investors or whatever, they can say, I have a twenty-year agreement to sell it, and this is what our costs are going to be, so here's the profit. And it makes, and it's valuable to them because they could get to three years, it happened before, and not pay taxes. On this particular project, that'd be about two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars over three years. So this, that's how valuable it is to them to have this agreement. For us, the advantage would be it's appeal-proof, and because solar's so new, if we did it by value and the state's doing the appraisal, it's something that could probably end up in a long appeal process, which wouldn't be good for anybody, so.
When you say the pure process is that when the state gives the company a tax bill and the company says, no, don't agree, so they don't, that's a.
Correct. Yeah, these are the type of accounts, a utility account, especially with something brand-new, and the appraisers at the state being new with it. One thing, when someone appeals, then you bring your comps, comparable properties. Well, because it's so new, that's going to be hard to do. It just keeps us out of something we probably don't want to get into as far as, we just went through with communication companies, seven, eight years of not billing them because of an appeal that doesn't seem to end. One side gets a decision, the other side appeals, and then they get a decision, the other side appeals, waiting at the end. But as far as this goes, it's very similar to the agreement that you guys already signed with the other solar companies. So it's less, in the beginning, the seven thousand per megawatt. I talked with you the other day and showed you eleven thousand was a tax on one of the projects from before, and now with the pilot agreement, it's going to bring in about twenty-three-hundred. But that's every year for twenty years, as long as it's in place. We don't know what the values are going to be, so it could be higher or lower after a period of time. And it kind of leads to a lot of questions, I think.
Ray, something that, yeah, Ray?
Yeah, Ray Sen's manager for the Down Lakeview. A few things about this project, it seems to me, first of all, I, I think there's a high likelihood that this project won't get built if they're not granted the provisions of the, of the last year's legislation.
The option of.
The option of the seven thousand.
My brother heard that from the development.
Well, I, I, and I think he said that early in his comments. I think he said that there's, that this project might not get built. I believe I heard him say that.
Well, I, I am not prepared to speak on what we would do if they didn't go forward. I mean, that would certainly be a decision that we would.
Take under consideration, but.
It would certainly cause a reevaluation. Where, our, our expectations right now are that we will be successful because we think it is actually mutually beneficial for us and the county. If we were not successful, we would need to reevaluate.
And the pilot program isn't the only program for, for tax relief. The enterprise zone, there's three or five here.
Yes.
Which, those monies that would come into the county are a little bit more flexible. That's, that's a tax abatement or a tax option. So the pilot isn't the only program that we can offer out there.
Yes.
The twenty-year guarantee that's seven thousand dollars per megawatt, none of us know exactly what the taxation's going to be and whenever the department of revenue's going to come back in and bring the, the power production side, the revenue side in taxation. We don't know that, but I just want to make sure, Ray, that, that I'm, when we're sitting here to make this decision, we make this decision on each one that comes before us. If, if, that, that's almost like a threat, that if we don't do this, we're not going to come here. And I just want all the things on the table appropriately and said right.
Well, I, I did hear him say that, that we'd have to, they would have to take under consideration in, in his opening remarks. But beyond that, what I was going to say is that, you know, if you want to go back to about the, the late nineteen-fifties with this particular piece of property, when it became a uranium tailing site, from then until the mid-nineteen-eighties, it was virtually useless, I guess, as a parcel of land. It probably did pay some property taxes while it was under the control of whomever, Arco or whoever the uranium ta, uranium developing processing company was. But of course, we all know that that left us with a superfund cleanup site that happened in the mid-nineteen-eighties and, and is set there till today with a little grazing going on, on the property. I do know that, it looks like this year, the property taxes on that particular parcel of land is somewhere in the neighborhood of twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars or so.
Nine-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars.
Actually, there's two pieces, I think, Larry, the other, if you, I, I saw that, but I think it's about twelve-hundred-and-fifty for the two pieces altogether. It used to be Roy Zidic that owned the other one, that now belongs to El, El River Holdings or Michael Horton. But anyway, you know, twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars, if, you know, given the history of the site and what we know, that site's restrictions, although there, it's been cleaned up, it's, it has this historical connotation of being a superfund cleanup site, and it's not, very desirable compared to others, probably, when it comes to being developed, at least like for residential or small commercial developments and so forth. So it'll probably sit there for another twenty years without much more than a little grazing taking place. If that were the case, you're looking at twenty-five-thousand dollars worth of tax income off of it as it is today versus one-point-four million dollars that would happen at the seven-thousand dollars per megawatt. And you know, I, you're right, there's, there's a lot of factors that go into this. One of the major factors that goes into this decision, I would think, would be the history of the site and what, what, what's going to happen with a site that has the, the connotations that this one in particular does. If you were looking at a, you know, some of the sites, such as the other, the other solar projects, you don't have those issues. But here you have a site that is probably very much desirable for a passive use where people aren't living on it or working on it on an hour and day basis, so.
They say there are two options, and they chose to kill. And that's what we have in front of us.
So I'll, Steve, I'll bring you up what I brought up yesterday in our work session, which you wasn't able to attend. This is an urban growth boundary, and so that brings to light to me a little bit different thing because the town has to, they have to, the town council needs to be a player in this, in my opinion. It's zoned industrial, so this industrial ground that has city water and sewer on it, yes, it was a superfund cleanup, so it's cleaned up. There is a groundwater issue, but it's a good piece of ground for industrial use. So me as commissioner sitting here, as you bring this forward, I'm probably going to ask the town council to do a letter of support because of, it will at some time become part of the city limits because it's part of the urban growth boundary, and it's taken a huge piece of industrial ground to attract industries into the Lakeview area and cover it with solar. So creates no jobs except for short-term jobs, and when you take a piece of industrial ground and cover it up with solar is good. I'm saying that that's not a bad thing, but it limits our option of our community to ever bring in an industry there that already has water and sewer crossed and those things. So I'm just bringing it forward, the concerns I had yesterday, that before I'm really going to be ready to go forward with this, is I want a letter of support from the town council that says, this is an urban growth boundary, we accept that it's going to take our industrial ground out, and this is something that we will support to do. Because once, if we decide to do this, the taxation is distributed through all taxing districts. It's different than the enterprise zone where that it's given right to the county or the town wherever it's, it's in. So that's one of my concerns. So I'm today not sitting here ready to accept this until I can get that letter, but I thought there'd be three of us here, it could have been a two-to-one vote or anything to do that. And so, and that, this is news to kind of, about what my position absolutely is. There's a typo in your pilot here, it says Lakeview River. It's, I guess, a typo. On the second page, there's something that's not acceptable to me at all, and it's, the company also has the right to terminate the stream without any penalty by giving ninety days' written notice that the county prior to end of the current tax year. So you can take this pilot program, and whenever it starts getting, or that it would be less to pay property tax, you could opt out. Now, though, I'm comfortable leaving that in there if we can opt out at any time also.
It's interesting, I, I said the intention was not for either party to be able to opt out of that scenario. Certainly, the intention is, I guess, for to provide certainty, so I think that was likely an oversight in.
Okay. So you would be good with taking that out. So it would be a twenty-year agreement with no opt-out, for you are a season one.
I'd like to take it back and make sure that I'm not overstepping, and that, that is, that, that's certainly the intention that I have always had with this, but before, I want to make sure to take it back and run through all the channels of Origis.
Okay. Because of, especially with the analysis that we've done, is that it possibly could get to, say, year fifteen, and then taxation, true taxation would be less than what the seven thousand dollars per megawatt would be, and then you would opt out, and there's no guarantee for us for that seven thousand dollars.
I believe that's true. I think it's likely that if, under a normal scenario, there would be taxes, and then especially in an enterprise zone application, which would start higher if it was an enterprise zone, and, you know, would be, there would be the relief for a certain period of time. And then at some point, I think it would actually occur, probably well before fifteen years, it would actually go lower under the normal scenario.
It'd drop down.
And like you said, the whole intention of this and the reason it's beneficial to us is to provide the certainty. So we will certainly look back provision.
So, so for me, Mr. Chairman, and we talked about this verbiage yesterday, some of you haven't talked to legal counsel about it, he said here, but compared to, we've done this pilot agreement with Obsidian Financial, that was an end of agreement we had, so that's a red flag for me. You need it run by your people. I would, if the board agrees, would like to have that letter of support from the town of Lakeview, because we only have so much industrial ground within the urban growth boundary. We're working on Red Rock now to extend the urban growth boundary, and the process has been quite burdensome. So if they're agreed to it in the urban growth boundary, I think it would go forward with this verbiage change there.
On the industrial, I'd like to have Darwin and Ray comment on that.
Sure, if I may, a couple things. First, the town did come to the county planning commission and supported the Origis project in our urban growth boundary. We're also in the process of negotiating a consent to annexation and a right-of-way agreement with Origis as well. The most logical location of their power line to access the Pacific Power system is down what would be Roberta Avenue, the unconstructed portion of Roberta Avenue that goes north from the, the T intersection at Missouri now. So we're in the process of working through that. I, I know, I just checked this morning, haven't heard back on that.
How fast is your, is that process, Ray? And I mean, and, and with Steve here, is, when are you going to start construction? When will that process be done? Is it even a county decision? Would it be a town decision?
If I may, back to the, where we are in the agreements, I don't know that Steve's, you know, how involved he is in this. We're working with attorneys in, in Ben for Origis that are, that are doing this, but per our draft agreement, again, I don't know if we'll have it for council consideration next Tuesday or not. It isn't back yet as of when I left the office a little bit ago, but the, the right-of-way agreement will be available as soon as it's signed for them to use, because they will have consented to the future annexation, which, as we know, that annexation process takes a little time to complete.
Yeah, it takes a while.
So, so the easement would be, or the right-of-way would be available for them to construct on immediately.
And we don't need it, for, get that, slow us down, because I think, obviously, the town council has been supporting this.
Right. I wanted to point out one other thing. You were citing, apparently, I, I know there was a draft agreement that came out some time ago with regards to this pilot project, and you pointed out the, the river statement that was in there that says Lakeview River or something, which was an error. There was another error, or I believe it's near, I would, I would remind you to double-check, but on the dates that it gave for the exclusion or, or from property taxes, I believe when you add up the number of years they've included in that, that you'll find that that's really twenty-one years instead of twenty years. So you might want to double-check that. I think they included dates at the end, one more year than they really should, so.
I've got a question, Steve. What's the time essence for you? Yeah, I was going to address that. It's essentially just like Ray's saying, we're working on, we can have that easement in place very soon, and then anticipating that we complete the annexation after construction's complete. Currently, we're intending to start construction, probably sometime in the April timeframe. At the earliest, at the absolute latest, it would be late May to June. Origis has several projects in Southern Oregon, and this is the furthest one along, and the one that they fully intend to start construction on first of all those projects. Well, ours would due to the support and cooperation we've received from the city and the county.
So you've already started the permit process as far as for electrical building?
We're preparing for the first to know.
Do you have a thing?
Yeah, that's for your question on industrial land and availability of other properties. There, there are a number inside the urban growth boundary. The Evadrol site is one to mention. There's other comprehensive plan and designated industrial areas in the north of this that are currently zoned as agricultural lands, also inside the urban growth boundary, but they could be rezoned to industrial, as they've already got comprehensive plan designation that way. And really, any, anytime you're talking about lands inside the urban growth boundary, you're talking about balancing residential needs and, and commercial and industrial, so the whole picture would be looked at when any rezon would be reconsidered. But there are available industrial lands outside of this. Now, cost is always a, a big question, and that's obviously what any developer has to look at when they're, you know, investigating properties in which they may purchase to build on.
I appreciate all that. I know we requested shovel-ready sites that are ready with Lakeview area and Lake County as a whole, Business Oregon, we haven't got, you probably have said more right there than what we've got put down in Black Business Oregon, even as aware of, Darwin. But that information should be given to Business Oregon, and I, I know that Ginger was tasked with that.
But the, the industrial zone, I don't have as much concern because we have options. On that one clause about termination, you cannot answer because you're just a consultant to the company, but do you think that's a, such a?
My, my guess is that was an oversight, essentially a mistake. But like you said, I can't officially speak for Origis on that and why we need to take that back to them. I certainly understand your concerns on that provision.
Yeah, I never caught, I see the dates in there, I haven't added them up. That Ray may have caught there. So we need a clean copy, that would be a good thing, I heard.
Agreed. Tell them.
I'll just give you my quick opinion, which I gave during the planning commission hearing before the county planning commission. As planning director, I gave it as my opinion that it was best suited the site for this type of development, but also as town council now, I'll give you my opinion that I certainly believe that this is the best use of that property, considering its history, and look very much forward to the development this spring and, you know, completion, you know, mid-summer. So very excited for the tax revenue. Obviously, they'll also bring to the taxing districts in which it lays.
Well, I, I, I guess I can, my concern about the town council and having a letter of support, we have a town councillor here, we have a town manager here that says they're in support, so I'm comfortable with that. But if, whatever, having that kind of development within the urban growth boundary that is going to be annexed into the town, we need that. We're not making a decision that they may not support, so I'm comfortable with that. The verbiage gets changed, we move forward.
Essence of time, if we wait for, this has been on our table for a month now, if we wait for correction on that one termination plan, is that going to be your thoughts, you know, the conflict of timing of development?
That's, that's actually a really good question, because we would need to look and see if this would impact the construction financing that is currently being pursued. So, well, I can't definitively say it would or it wouldn't, I can say it certainly might. And I guess I'd ask, if we, if we do make the revisions and discuss the document, would it be another month until we would be able to essentially prove it?
No, we, we need it again in two weeks.
In two weeks, okay. I don't think that a two-week timeframe would be detrimental. A month would be more challenging, especially if what we can say is that we like a travel agreement once provisions are, once the appropriate provisions are revised.
I'd like to have the clean copy, available, complete the review, have our legal counsel review it, and then sign the clean, accurate copy.
Have you looked at this?
No, I have not seen this yet.
What's it, is it? Any questions?
So.
You weren't the one that.
You could have an emergency meeting. To have one to. Yeah. I guess I'd ask, if, if council hasn't had a chance to review, if we could, to, in case there's anything else, I can certainly go ask anyone who are there, revise it and have some more comments, and you can go through again, so.
My suggestion would be, there's a, an adjusted copy, and if we get that and review it, and we bumped it up on a two-week meeting, and we're pressing a two-week meeting, how do I have just a quick session that if it, if it's not, early on, it would all be due to that quick session, deciding? What's your thoughts, Commissioner?
I, I think Susan, if a clean copy, if two weeks isn't too long, I mean, there's still the permit process, all these other things you're working on next, and taxation, they're working on the ground right now, I've seen people out there surveying it.
Correct.
I, I think they, Steve obviously knows it, where I'm at, I'm ready to go forward on it and agree to it, just need a clean copy, so I think with your investors and everything, you should be pretty comfortable with it, two weeks. If, if there comes a reason why you need it sooner than that, to get financing available, we can run an emergency or a special meeting. Twenty-four hours for a special meeting, emergency meeting is fifteen minutes notice, and I don't know that, that it would go under emergency, but a special meeting in twenty-four hours would be, yeah, happen pretty easy.
Sure, we appreciate that.
Any other comments? So where it stands at now, you're taking it back to Origis, and see about that one clause and some of the typos, and give it back to us. How's that?
I would say very quickly, I mean, certainly we'll push for this week, and that's what I would expect, yeah.
And we could give it back to us, and if they'll do, there's a person, see, who does other things for us, knows. If not, then we're going to have it on two weeks, you know, session.
Great, absolutely will. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
I've got my phone to remind me myself, I should turn off my phone, so if you're going to give their cell phone. I was not texting. Oh, sorry, Will, we went past ten-ten.
No problem.
Come on up and tell us what your proposal is.
I'm going to come introduce, and then let Phil do it, that's like our regular chair.
Yeah.
We're coming to ask for assistance before the renovation, and, and, you know, down there, it's all yours to try to support. My goal was to get those playgrounds, you know, and get in good shape again. The big thing that we wrestle with down there is the asphalt, it's just falling to pieces, and.
It's a safety issue with it.
Pardon me. It's a safety issue with it. Yeah. And that made me put on children's hands and knees and everything over the years, and it's probably uncomfortable. So, anyway, Susan, we have no opportunity this year to pursue this. You know, we look at, you know, outside sources, community like Rodri and Serophimus and Lyons to give us assistance, and they've all, I haven't done confirmation from Serophimus yet, but Lyons and Rodri have signed all of this, so. Anyway, we competed against a swimming pool, and I backed off waiting for that to come to fruition, and the soccer field had come to fruition, so now I was old to go forward with this, but of course, I'm not the principal of that anymore, so I hand it off to Susan. it off to Susan, poor thing, and so she gets to give me a full presentation here as far as the nuts and bolts of this, and I appreciate your consideration on this, so. So Susan and Melissa, back to us.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Melissa.
Melissa and I have been working together, and Melissa's representative from our parent club, and is right, helping write grants, um, as a partner in this project. So that, that, that's for involvement, and I sent some information over to Denise for you. She should have a letter in front of you and then some estimates. What we're asking for is some help with the removal of asphalt for the playground project, and then installation of asphalt. Um, Sam Demuth is our, is our project manager and will be helping us with this project, and he's had a few conversations with, um, or conversation last week with Rick, uh, didn't know you as well, just kinda giving advice more than anything because he is our resident expert on asphalt. Um, so we're here to visit with you a little bit and answer any questions we can about the scope of the project, and also the revenue commitments that we already have and the ones we're pursuing. And so I'd like Melissa to visit a little bit about some of the grants we have coming up and some of the commitments we already have.
Okay, do you guys have this handout?
Yes.
Okay. So I created this so that you had a chance to look at, look at the project quickly and see kind of what we're, what we're excited about doing. Um, it gives you a little project summary, and then off to the left, some, um, items that we're excited to put into this, um, project. We have a reading garden that we're planning to put in just south of the library. There's a space there that is not really being used, and, um, we thought that would be an excellent way also to, um, get some funding as well through the Ford Family Foundation, and also a place for kids that don't necessarily play on the playground equipment or play soccer or football at recess, or, and, um, also a place for the teachers to use to go out and, um, during the day, um, three. And as well as garden space for the school. We have a soccer field that's planned just west of the school. There's asphalt there and, um, basketball hoops, and we're gonna take out part of that asphalt. Well, we're gonna take all of it. Correct.
Yeah, do you look at the estimates for the asphalt? We've reduced the amount of asphalt by quite a bit, it's much cheaper for us than in grass, so we'd be taking out the majority of the west end of all that asphalt, um, and putting in enough grass to accommodate another soccer or football, small-sized football field for the kids, but, you know, AYSO soccer would also benefit from it as well.
Yeah. Um, and so we have committed partners so far, you can see listed there, um, the school district, student lobby, the playground fund, parents' club, the, um, Lake County DA, U script, and then we also have committed as well, um, the Lions and Rotary for their permanent spring fundraisers. We don't know how much, but we have, and it's committed partners. And then if you turn to the back, we're gonna relocate, um, the swings that are on the north end of the playground, not really in a safe location as far as, um, monitoring students, and we wanna move everything into one location. So it's just right there as far as the playground equipment. And we would like to replace the dated playground equipment there with something, a new play structure, um, as well as replace one of the basketball hoops.
We'd be replacing two of them, too. Right, right now, our basketball hoops are out almost, you know, halfway to those plant trees that sit there on the west end, and what we would like to do, the proposal in the plan is to put grass in on that west end, and then move our basketball court up underneath our, um, overhead lights, so that the kids in the community have the opportunity to play summer ball in the evenings, and put a court in that has painted three-point lines and it's a regulation court for them, um, and then put two basketballs facing each other, and then one's on the ends, just for their shoot-around type games, I think.
And we just, we feel that, you know, that the school grounds is, it's not just used by the students, it's used by the community. AYSO uses it, um, everybody uses it, and as well as the basketball hoops using them for the summer ball, and this is just, it's a big project, and we feel that it's, it's important for our entire community. So you can look, um, I included some points for, as far as what the renovation includes. And, um...
Lake County School District's commitment, that's listed on your letter, that's our cash commitment, but we would have quite a bit more in-kind as far as putting in sprinkler systems, putting in saw, things like that. And I apologize, we are working on it, on an up-to-date budget with current prices. This project, as you know, has been in the works and been on the table for many years. So we have some, some budget items that are not as updated as we'd like, so, uh, Sam Demuth is our project manager, he's working with Rick a little bit, just to give us some advice on what those current prices are for asphalt, gravel, things like that, and also , um, saw.
So, when you said the equipment's dated, I went to school there, so when you're saying I'm sorry.
I didn't mean we were dated.
I, I think that stands in the record.
I am dated. Um, so yes, um, on the, the whole layout of this, and I know you guys, I believe you're, the concept and everything you've been working on some time, do you have an absolute layout or an engineered plan or a, a draft plan? I, I imagine, and Rick wasn't available today to be here, he may have, him and Sam may have talked about this, but, um, what's saying that, I guess? Are, are you looking at possibly the county doing in-kind by using some of our equipment, come in there, do some work? Are you looking for cash, water? I know you're looking for anything you can get. I'm open.
We don't have to say that out loud.
I'm open that you're, I'm open that you're really big right there. But, um, you know, it's not really clear by reading this if you're looking for cash or you're looking for a community partner to come in and do some work.
We visited a little bit with Rick. What we're looking for is, um, in-kind donations of removal of the asphalt, and then, um, insulation of new asphalt. That's the, that's the proposal.
On the insulation to do, would that be purchase of asphalt too, or just insulation of it?
Well, that I'm not, I'm not familiar enough as to how that would work. I would have to defer to Will and to Sam about that, uh, because I don't know the scope of what Rick has time for, and I don't wanna distract him because that dog-like project's pretty important.
Yeah, with it, and then, Susan, that was gonna be my next question. Your guys' timeframe on this, and the other part of it is, is, um, for the asphalt part of it, the commissioner cash room is going there, is if there's a hard coffee kind set up here like there was last year, the price is so much cheaper. I'm sure you guys probably considered how I'm excited on how great the drive can be just a bit.
That, that is what we're looking for.
He would like to talk to the, to the playground project, the asphalt piece of the west end.
Okay.
And one of his recommendations, he had two recommendations. One was to delay the project another year, knowing that Night River would probably have hot mix over here, or, um, have his, have the county help with removal of the asphalt and that's it. Um, and then he would give us the names of some folks that might be willing to bid the hot, the, the asphalt part of it, if we wanted to move forward with it this year. So I don't, I don't wanna get ahead of myself, but that's kind of some of the conversations that happened last week.
Well, it sounds like, and that's exactly where I was thinking today, ladies and Will, is that Rick's the key player, and that's, and he, he's the one that might be recommendation to us, of what he's able to possibly do or not, and it sounds like he's already crossed that bridge, and Sam's working with him. So that's, that's real positive, and we'll work closely with, with Rick on that.
We just wanted to make sure that, and we came to you as partners and made sure that we can answer any questions when you're in the loop, and, um, and we have everything kind of on the table to.
So just, just a thought, if, if the road department's, Rick's timeframe was that he could grind that out this year, that the, your, our students, my grandkids on rocks up there, is that something that can be done? I guess just Safeway and the, the Lilyard, I guess.
It is pretty much rocks, yeah. So, um...
These six kids.
I need to put talk, and I open the door.
I know, but it's a lot of fun that way. Um, you know, our timeframe is to start June fifteenth, and those kids are out, and be done by August fifteenth, but those are always the best-laid plans. Um, and as the weather gets nicer, we never know, like, Kenny, how much we're gonna have of it, and so I, I understand because you guys have commitments other places, but I, I don't know how long it takes to remove that much asphalt.
Well, and I'm, I'm not as expert as Rick is in move asphalt, then it brings in, and Sam will talk about this, other things. What is your base? It's gotta be brought to a certain scale.
And they are discussing that. They, that's where those estimates are coming in, and they may be a little bit higher than what we had from a couple of years ago, and that may kinda change our plan.
And we have set a date, yep, we are, you know, kind of, most of us, myself, Susan, and Sam, we're all gonna sit down with Rick and kind of flush this whole thing out, so. So today is an informational day, pretty much, and you guys will work with our roadmaster and, yeah.
We just wanted to come in and get you as much information as we could and answer questions for you, so we could start that conversation.
Maybe we'll have more of an idea in two weeks, we'll get back on the secondary kids, so, yeah.
Okay. I agree, I definitely need, I may have to look at it and pitch it hazard to the kids. I've got, got a couple of other questions. You say it's open to the general public for basketball hoop stuff? That's a big plus.
Yeah.
We need that.
Yeah.
And I'm not very much east for the program. What that is?
When, is a program through Safeway and some other companies, and if you sign up with them electronically, every time, um, you buy something at Safeway, a percentage of it goes to whatever, uh, school you've asked to donate? Um, and so we've run a couple of campaigns for the high school and the elementary schools, and they just go for a short period of time, I wanna say two weeks or less, and then that percentage of whatever the community spends goes to the, the senior schools. Uh, so we've just kind of been saving along, uh, for quite a while and putting all the pennies together, um, for this. So we're really hoping that Lions Club and Rotary, um, will be able to, to help us with the chunk of change in this, but Melissa's also working on a grant with the Ford Family Foundation, we're working on that this weekend, next week, and then, uh, Mr. Lynch and Mr. Vanenbergh have a proposal as well called McDonald's for a part of contribution for this project.
Well, one thing that we're very cautious about is competing with the private sector, your taxing industry, and we can do intergovernmental agreement type things, but we're very cautious about competing with the private sector, but just, and you guys still have it.
And, and that's one of the things that Rick brought up in our conversations, is that we don't have anybody available this summer because Purdue's and Scott Mowbray are on projects, uh, in the eastern part of the state in Idaho, uh, to do this, and that, and so that's where some of our conversations came about talking to some folks out of the area.
We, we partnered before with the track, just, exactly what you guys obviously know about and everything. I just like to, you guys are obviously know that, like, public setting, so I thought I'd mention.
Also on the Lions Club and the Rotary, uh, we have a Lions person here to take the championship, and we got a Rotary person here that can champion.
Well, I have to put a meeting to champion it.
Uh, two Lions.
So, uh...
Here's my.
Do you have any other questions?
No. We, uh, I think, I think you're, if you're going the right way as far as trying to look and negotiate us out to cheapest way to build, but if, if there is a hot mix plant, if there's a projection one coming into the, like, the area, that's your cost. And Rick knows all that stuff, so, well, he's very interested.
We appreciate your time, and then if you have other questions that come up, just have Denise get home, or you send an email, we'd happy to try and assist with that. Thank you.
Thank you for having us here today, guys. Thank you, guys.
See you.
Yep.
To our agreement with the state health authority.
Thanks, appreciate it. Forward. Um, the remainder of this is fiscal year end, and the next one will be additional five thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars. These funds are supposed to be for peer-delivered services, um, of course, people who will have interactions with the, or correction system.
That's what the SE sixty-three does?
Yes.
And are there any, if additional funds that state yield five thousand something hundred dollars, does there any stipulation of increased targets or expenditures to check, check money that have to?
Just extra money to get, um, to get the peer-delivered services, uh, up and running and more functional. So, we've got, um, I'd say with the treatment court that's already in place, we've got a pretty good, uh, pool of folks to pull from and over to use these above this. Um, I think we, we have previously budgeted, uh, for other peer-delivered services, and so, um, the Rotary will train two, um, peers a year for free, so, um, my goal or hope, I should say, is that, uh, we'll have one in the north end and one down here in the south of the county.
Oh, yeah. It's all written out here. Uh, I'll move to approve the third amendment, so Oregon Health Authority, two thousand fifteen, seventeen, intergovernmental agreement, financing, community additions, and mental health service agreement number one, four seven seven nine three.
I'll second your motion. No other discussion.
All right.
Aye. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. President, if you want to take the time. Ben, accept his resignation and don't thank you for your service.
Sir, uh, Ben, you've had an opportunity to advance, and, uh, if you have just noticed a departure here, I'd like to extend appreciation for the good work you've done.
Well, thank you.
Best wishes on your future.
I appreciate that.
Is right here over there.
It rains, just got everyone party safe.
We, we'd like to officially accept the resignation of our department head and give it opportunity to say thank you for the time that you've prepared, the time that you've served for us. Thank you for that, Ben. Wish the best for you, Rick, Bill.
Thank you.
And it's just a short race away, a week and a half from today, so.
That's right. That's there, so.
You, you have received a lot of kudos from the state for being poured into directorship and taking that on, and doing an outstanding job. Always give many, many kudos.
Well, I, I did everything I could to, uh, make sure the Lake County Mental Health was, um, running at, at the most optimal level. Um, there's still some bumps in the road that need ironed out, but I think with the current staff that are there and the proposal that I gave to you, that, um, success will continue.
And we'll be discussing options, including the proposed date, probably later in the tax discussion.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Do you need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to accept Ben's resignation effective three eleven, that's sixteen.
Second. I'll read it.
Aye. Good for service, good night.
Thanks, man. County ordinance, one one three, uh, association of Oregon counties, uh, Oregon Association of Silver Engineers and Silver Bears, Silver Bears Oasis.
We've had a couple different times of discussion. When AOC was on the phone with us two weeks ago, they asked us to approve the ordinance and the agreement at the same time.
And so make sure that, um, clearly, we don't have to notify you to accept this ordinance without notice, or do we have to have a hearing on this?
On any ordinance, you have to have a hearing. That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So you'll be two, uh, today will count, and then you do it again two weeks from now.
Okay, so we need to open this up as a hearing?
Uh, yeah. Other comments? It doesn't have to be notice to the public other than our, yeah, take agenda spot. Okay. Just wanna make sure we've all listened, right?
So we should open it up for a hearing at the time?
Yes, open up the public comment.
Yeah, it's open for public hearing comment. That's a, we have a ordinance to accept, ordinance number one one three.
We'll do it open for a few minutes? Sounds good.
While Frank is digesting. Dr. Oregon Health, Wellness Program Policy Update, we had discussion on that yesterday. Sorry, do you have anything?
Have nothing further for you unless you have any questions to do.
Nope, just the things that dropped forward.
I'll have to replace Danny's current board member.
Yeah. So the recommendation coming from Wellness Committee is, is on the general staffing requirements. I'm going to read all of it through to yesterday. And that's a recommendation from the Wellness Committee to the Board of Commissioners. So this is a policy change. I will move to accept the policy change dropped forward by the Wellness Committee. Another second. Any other discussion? All right. Aye. Thanks, Eric. Now, we still have here, we had an order for several county properties for the audience on camera.
Oh, come on, please. We went over the properties, I think that's yesterday. Also, you've had a little advance of this meeting. The recommended properties as a whole are listed on Attachment A, which is part of the order. Four, six properties to be held for reasons being sure and safe crowds habitat and don't have a way to access those properties up off the Plush Call Road. One on the east side of Heart Mountain, just outside of the refuge area. Again, access is a major issue there in the same core habitat. There's a five acre property that's designated as public and zoned as within the town boundaries of a commercial. And it's adjacent to the playgrounds, and that property we should actually hold it on to for future options for repair. And then also a property just south of the man camp area, just off of west side of the vert road. Purged it as man camp area, it's a commercial piece, it's just a small, will be allowed. And then a property at the south end of M Street on the west side of the rail, which is properties we've historically held on to, which are close to the rail. So those are, those are my recommended whole properties. And the rest are listed with minimum value set of six percent on the real market value at the auction. Okay. Starting to do. An auction is typically held that first Monday in June. That's according to our current policy and won't be changing until later we'll discuss as Rick made changes.
So before, for this order for sale, within the sale, we have some properties that are occupied right now, residential places.
Yeah, there are a couple.
So if we're going to accept this order for sale, we need to absolutely be sure we're going to be able to get those properties, have vacationed those people out of there, so that's what we're ramped up to get it done because it's already large.
This has, this has happened in the past where we've put to auction a couple of properties that have been occupied. Previous tenants or owners hadn't moved out prior to the county, put them for the auction, but, you know, for whatever reason, those people have remained in those properties and worked with legal counsel and the sheriff's department on trying to get these people removed from the premises as quickly as possible. We are talking about, you know, three and a half months until, well, about three months actually to the date, until the sale. Hopefully get that accomplished. I know one of the properties is from last year, so it's the one that's in Christmas Valley. I had no idea that there was somebody till after, or during the actual sale last year. So it's something we're continuing to work on.
So if we are able to get the occupants out, what is our responsibility for cleaning these places up? Because one of them is completely covered with a bunch of automobiles that you assume have no titles and all kinds of things that we may be tasked with, we'll get that cleaned up and build it to the sale.
Yeah, so, you know, any property sold as is, however, you know, we want to try to make it most favorable for sale, yeah. And, you know, we'll certainly have to cross that bridge when we get there. Certainly hope that most of those will be removed properly disposed of or brought to another location, which will be allowed at that location. That property that we're speaking of is zoned industrial, and so it was probably previously allowed for any land use ordinance to take effect for some of the operations at that location. Certainly, you know, any amount of those vehicles going to another location may be causing land use violations, so we'll have to look into that as well.
So what you need is a motion, I'll make motion in matter of the sale of property acquired by Lake County Order for Sale of County Property.
Now, second, it's given off the rest of the like, the ones in Dartmouth, March, we're retaining.
Yeah.
Correct. How, right. So I'm not happy about that.
But hopefully it will be fixed.
Copy designed.
So unwind. Again, I could, like.
You're a little.
I knew the last one, because I wanted to be like.
What?
What?
Got it.
Shoot, cut again. This time I print it.
So, Jim looks at me and asks.
Would you have Darren's addition?
Go ahead.
Plus, you want to close that other hearing?
Okay.
All right, thanks. So now, onto yesterday's discussion on the land sale policy. I brought up the fact that in previous land sale auctions and then also the three-year after sale, in which properties get reduced in their assessed selling price to fifteen percent of the real market value. While the potential buyers have voiced their opinion, or at least questioning why we're waiting a full two years to get these things reduced at a price in which, you know, people are actually showing interest in them. I did mention that we have seventy-eight, or sorry, seventy-three different lots still available for sale that, you know, have been on the list for some time. So the discussion yesterday focused on kind of why our policy is what it is. I didn't commend this, inherited this policy, but we have many amendments to it, which are favorable to align people more options to purchase these properties, one of which is they can mail in, you know, a purchase request and not have to be a person to be in the introduced percentage, what we're calling a drawing, where if there's more than one person interested in the property, then we throw everybody's name in a hat and we essentially pick a winner. The update before you, I did send it also in the email just moments before this meeting started.
I don't have.
But let me, yeah, let me give you a copy of both a track changes version and legal counsel as well. And then I'll just go over quickly the major points of this. I gave it to Denise early, but then I have one more addition, so there's mine. And then a nice hard talking finish, if you're comfortable with this. I don't say that you're making any changes to it, without the track changes version of what this will look like. And then I'll explain this in two seconds here. The, the recommendation that I've made is that after one year of the property, let me back up just a minute. The sale happens the first Monday in June at sixty percent of the real market value, and that's an auction. So it can get bid up and has historically been bid up. Upon that, we had a, the policy currently reads, which I'm proposing to amend. It read that after two weeks later, then it would drop to forty percent of the real market value, in which it would stay at that price for a full two years, after which then it would drop to fifteen percent of the real market value. My proposal is that we now move the drop to forty percent after only one week, and so on the second Monday of each year. And then following one year, the remaining properties that aren't sold would then go to twenty-five percent of the real market value. And then that should spark a little bit more interest. I didn't want to jump quickly to fifteen percent, none of, there's still potential to, you know, make more money for these tax districts in which these properties lay and, you know, get distributed through the general funds of those tax districts. So then if for some reason people still don't buy it to twenty-five percent, then it would find out that two years still dropping down to fifteen percent. Those are really the major changes. I did, there is clarification on the dates. The wordage before was that it would, two years from the date in which it had been dropped to forty percent. Now just going straight with the second and third Mondays of June for construction. So I think this gives another option in which we can try to, you know, entice buyers for these properties. The discussion is why don't we bring them just quickly down to fifteen percent and get them back on the rolls? I have a quick summary of kind of the cost of doing so. I have before me a copy of the deed when these properties were deeded to the county for the foreclosure. I used the very first property, which on the land sale for this year is the two thousand and sixteen dash one one five property, count number two, three, two, one, one. The judgment amount on each of these properties is a four-year what the tax loss was. And so on this property, the full judgment was three hundred and forty-five dollars and change, which equals out to about eighty-five dollars a year, but that also includes fees. But looking back at the tax, historically, it's been about seventy dollars for this twenty-eight year property every year. So seventy dollars, the, this year, what you guys have just approved is a sixty percent value of the real market value of seventy-five hundred dollars roughly. Forty percent a week later, if this policy is changed, it will drop to just over five thousand dollars. If we went with it twenty-five percent, it'd be over just over thirty-one hundred dollars. And fifteen is almost nineteen hundred dollars. So knowing that, yes, we're holding on to these properties for a little extended time. We're really willing to use it losing, for the example, and this property, seventy dollars of tax revenue for that one year. But the potential gain is well over, you know, twelve hundred dollars, fifteen hundred dollars by keeping it still in our possession, trying to entice buyers at this higher value, which then gets redistributed again, I'm just saying to the tax district. So whereas we do a very good job of tracking these properties and then on the website, there's maps available, both, you know, myself and Ken.
Out of seventy dollars, the county only gets about twenty-six percent.
Exactly, so it's not a whole lot anyways. And then, you know, we reimburse ourselves for the cost of wellness programs as well, which is according to state statute. This is my recommendation. Do you have any other questions?
So in a nutshell, it's in effect in another sale, twenty-five percent.
Yep, yep. One year, where there was no one year.
Yeah, I, I was ready to just go to the fifteen percent, just get the properties back on there, I guess. Thinking about maybe creating a little bit of revenue or whatever, down the road. I don't know, ten percent compared to fifteen percent. The other thing is managing things takes a lot of your time. That's not brought into the equation and everything. So assuming they get back on the tax rolls, plus, I hear they're doing them also. You're the one that's doing them, your recommendation is to give them, have pre-tier basically sixty, twenty-five, and fifteen percent. That's your recommendation?
Sixty, forty, twenty-five, fifteen.
So to be able to do this, we can agree to that concept today and start the process if we're able to.
I think as a policy, it needs to be thirty days later. The question I, I guess I turned the legal counsel on is, you know, if this becomes effective thirty days from now as a county policy, how does that change the current available list, which, you know, states that, you know, the properties sold last year won't go to fifteen percent and they have no mention of a twenty-five percent in it. I will quickly update our website if we can to.
Then we will have to admit to the policy, just a inclusive of the.
A lot of.
Yeah.
Perfect. And we'll just make that simple change on the website, let people know, you know, moving forward.
Reading through this, if I do scratch the land sale auction list, it's supposed to be Lake County town for.
I moved it up, sorry. To try to keep this all sale on one page, I just moved it up. I had a lot of spaces, which I grouped it right under the land sale auction, that first paragraph. It's moved right to that spot.
Okay, well, I'm looking at this one, mine's got red lines here, that here is completely.
Yeah, no, it just got moved and I was told you where some of this went. Same with the minimum bid, it's scratched out, two lines below that. It just got moved up.
And is the Lake County Examiner, that's our news media on record.
We do send it to the other papers, certain things as well.
All it takes is a hit of a button. I appreciate that.
So for the process, what we need to do, we need to accept this to be effective thirty days from now. That's the way it works.
I don't know that you actually need to wait thirty days.
For some reason, after a day.
I thought policy changed.
On my mind, I don't know.
Yeah, I think if there's something that you feel is sensitive, then, you know, you can wait thirty days, but.
And there's no actual change today to.
Yeah, no.
You probably did wait thirty days, it's not on effect for sale on June.
Yeah, I'm not forced to wait.
Actually, what would take effect is that the properties that are, the two thousand and fourteen properties that are currently offered at forty percent would now be offered at twenty-five percent. So that change will happen in a year.
We could.
Because in June, they were down to fifteen percent.
Write in here that those properties will become available to twenty-five percent at the same time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Without, at the timeframe, I may.
So, so had this policy already been in effect back in the third week in June of last year, they would have went to twenty-five percent. So currently, they would be.
So it'd be fine, effective immediately to be there most wonderful. But before.
Yeah, I should look it over. But, you know, I.
Why don't you, you could approve it, subject to any revisions by legal counsel. Move to approve Lake County land's policy, sale policy amendment, subject to legal counsel review.
I'll second discussion. Now, if we accept it, I hear we feel, and he has comments, changes. We would like for no changes, except for changes, and they go in effect.
Correct.
How do I best not see any change?
Well, I had my emotion to, if there's changes to be, needed to be made, that we would accept the changes legal counsel put in. You'd be there. So.
That's true. I put a lot of things in here.
And I apologize, I forgot the other last change that's included on this. Now, it's allowable by ORS two seventy-five. We apply most of that directly anyways, but to include it in our policy, and I mentioned this, probably not during the meeting, but I did mention it right after the meeting, to mention to Sean, that private sales, we've handled this a few different times, where lots are under fifteen thousand dollars and deemed unsuited for the construction, replacement of the dwelling, are allowed to be sold at a reasonable price to anyone who makes a request for that after it's been published. And we, I added a line, the final red markup on the backside of this page, shows that private sale language in accordance to ORS two. And we, I added a line, the final red markup on the backside of this page shows that private sale language in accordance to ORS two seventy-five, two two five. And so what I've quoted in here is word for word from state statute, other than I add, you know, that it's deemed unsuited by either the pine director or the building official. And that allows one of us or whole to make that call. I make this suggestion and inclusion into a policy specifically so that I have somewhere to turn to quickly as a policy, that I don't have to flip to the ORS to give to, you know, adjacent property owners or anyone interested in picking up one of these lands that really is not going to ever see as well known. Or at least unless the reconfiguration of those lots happen that would make it...
Well, there's landlocked pieces and everything, but it's really not part of the policy, it's part of the state law.
It's part of state law, but so is any of this. And so that's why I just wanted to have a place to reference it really quickly. State law may change at times, so, you know, that line is, again, is, you know, according to state laws, there's nothing wrong with it, so to speak, but it is, to me, it was a good addition to the law.
By you, there is a ten acre piece that's in the middle of somebody's ranch.
Yep.
Are you going to sell that to them or are you going to put it to land sale?
They could request it, but we would have, I, I wouldn't deem it, see, I wouldn't and neither, I honestly, anyway, why the building official would deem it unsuited for galling. Now, unsuited for galling, you know, and this has according, you know, under applicable zoning and zoning ordinances and building codes. And building codes, there's certainly no reason why it wouldn't be able to be eventually suited for galling in the form of land use. There's no chance I would deem that in the local private sale.
That's where I'm going because of, we've many times, when I say we, have a lot of conditional use on ten acre pieces, but we've had this scenario come to us, that there's a ten acre tract right in the middle of my property. I want to just buy it and have it auctioned. I just didn't know what that was going to be.
So what will happen in this scenario is that we're going to publish the order before consecutive weeks. First, you guys are going to make an order that says, you know, these are the ones for sale. Then any of these that don't sell, then a private property owner could come in and say, hey, this is right in the middle of me. I know you got a sixty percent today, no one bid on it today, I want to purchase it at fifteen percent. And then we say, sure, if, if it fit those criteria. Again, a ten acre piece, it's going to have a hard time saying it's not suited for galling. But there's lots of, lots of ways that, you know, you know, a building official or pine director could say it's unsuited for galling.
Well, I think that if it didn't sell, just reading that statement there, it can be sold for less than fifteen percent. If it didn't sell, then they would have to pay the forty percent, wouldn't automatically just go down to fifty percent.
They'd have to make a request and then we'd have to further analyze it. What I've envisioned is that in the, in the future, when I come to you guys with these orders...
Well, if it says the property will be sold for, will be sold for less than the price which the county considers to be reasonable, not less than fifteen percent. So if people can take it, they get it for fifteen percent, I mean, who's going to make that call?
Well, that's what I'm saying, that either the pine director or building official has to make the call. But what I, now, where I was going with that is that I will, I will put that before you guys at the start of next orders. So next year, when we get properties deeded to us, as part of my Attachment A, I'll just write a little, you know, column on it that may say something like, you know, building official, I have looked over this and these ones we deem as unsuited for galling. And if they need to open all lots, I'll just quickly state that right away, but someone may want to bid on it because, you know, there may be two adjacent property owners and, and it may not be totally landlocked by one of them. And then they may bid it up, you know, so it's a good idea to start at the sixty percent, but then if, if it doesn't sell, then one of, one of the other could say, hey, you know, they had the opportunity at that point, then to bid on it. And if they didn't, then one of the others could say, hey, it's not suited for galling.
But it's just state, not the state law, I guess.
Yeah, it is.
But please, not suited for, like, well, it's either too small or it's too...
Anything that's over an acre, it's going to be really difficult to say it's unsuited for galling. Now, the scenario you said on, say it's in the middle of someone's pivot, I'm going to say that's unsuited because they don't have access for one. And then, you know, and at that point, probably the only the adjacent property owners are going to, you know, purchase that. Now, I'll tell you, as the pine director running this land sale process, I do a very good job of putting it on a screen, showing people exactly where these lots are. And I try to deflect any potential for a real troublesome case in which we may get appealed because someone's bought this in the middle of someone's ranch. And so we try to avoid that at all costs.
We always sell a property that's landlocked, it's some, require some way of necessity to it.
We try to hold off on the ones that are...
Did make bid of...
I'd be careful on that access because people can't be denied access, the process will be others to know.
It's an expensive process, it's usually not even worth the...
Can't be denied access.
Well, they could be denied, but they have recourse to the county.
She was a property that failed in prior charge.
I'll remember that.
So there's motion on the day.
And I'll second it.
It was second. There's an amendment, you second it.
Then, all in favor?
All right.
Last one is fifteen percent.
Thanks, now let me explain that for another...
I've reviewed this during the discussion ecologically and I don't see any problems with it. I also checked the statute and decided it's all fine.
Very good.
Good update on the website and move forward. Thank you, guys.
Now, meeting that's, what do we have?
February sixteenth, correct?
Correct.
Sixteenth, well.
And I will move to approve February sixteenth amendment.
I don't have time to peruse it.
Do you want to... Do I need to go get anyone? I know Commissioner...
We started back on the way, so, yeah, we closed the hearing.
Close the hearing and we have to carry it over to the next one.
Now, okay, so I don't know if there's any legal...
My motion to accept this.
Yeah.
I'll start your motion, February sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Long third?
Yeah.
Hi. Any legal updates for the next session?
No, Darwin covered that stuff that we're doing to get the people out of the property. We start union negotiations this afternoon, so that's it for the session.
We have anything for executive session?
One real short, executive session.
And then we can discuss future of mental health on the executive session.
Okay.
Now, I'd like to take a fifty-five minute break.